Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome, everybody. Victor, are we off mute and recording?
Yes, we are.
Well, this is a special meeting of the City of Harbor Springs, Michigan, Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty P. M. local time. And Victor, would you like to start us with a roll call?
Yes, uh, Phil Mulder.
Here.
Barry Luskard.
Here.
Vanessa Warren.
Here.
Kenny Stewart.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Mark Bade.
Here.
Chip Evers.
Here.
And is Avery here? So we do have a forum just for those that know Jeannie and Bob are not up there because Bob is no longer City Council. Sorry, he's no longer in City Council. He was a council rep on the planning commission. And then Jeannie, she was the appointed resident on the planning commission. But since she was elected to council, she can't be the resident appointed. The council doesn't yet appoint someone. Council member. So.
Yes. So this meeting, we have seven members, and they're all here. And we have our two members in the audience. Thank you very much for coming. And thanks for your service on your various forums and such, and stepping in to fill vacancies as we care. And maybe we'll see you again on this side of the table soon. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of minutes, and we don't have any special meeting. And then we have public comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda. The only thing on tonight's agenda is the draft zoning code. So other than that, it's a wide open field.
We're at 19 East Third Street. And I know I've done this several times, but I just have to say, I am so impressed with your dedication and diligence and the hours you must have put into this. And how you have listened respectfully to all kinds of feedback and 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 stayed the course. And I, personally, I think from my real position in the audience, you have come up with a fabulous zoning code for us. So thank you once again.
Any other comments from the room? Victor, may you have a hand up?
Yep, Thatcher Waller, can I get yourself?
Okay, do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So hello to all, and I would agree with the last person who commented. But I have an addition here. My name is Thatcher Waller, and I live at twenty-six twenty-five Pennsylvania Avenue. I noticed with interest a few months ago that the Toski City Council had approved a motion to establish a historical district ordinance. They did this because they were advised to do so by members of their planning commission and the city attorney. I'm also aware that Harbor Springs City Code, Section three point six zero zero, requires city council to appoint seven members to a historic commission. I'm wondering, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm wondering what steps are needed for Harbor Springs Planning Commission to place simple wording in the proposed zoning remap to include historic preservation and make it a recommendation to city council to create a historic commission as an advisory for the planning commission, city council, and Harbor Springs. Only this statement would be necessary for the city to start this process. I believe that a historic commission would go a long way in helping bringing understanding to the importance of preserving this unmatched, completely authentic, and wonderful place where we live. So thank you for very much for listening to my comments. And if you have any response, I'm all ears. If not, I completely understand. Thank you.
Anybody else on Zoom?
Yeah, Linay Wells.
Hello, Linay, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. I just wanted to thank you all and Beckett and Raider, John Igoangeli, and and your team at the city, as well as the planning commission, for taking the time to consider the comments that we've made through the We Love Harbor Springs group. I appreciate the fact that you took the memorandum review, peer review that we conducted and the time to address all of those items. And I guess just that, you know, we agree with all the comments in that table. Certainly, there's preferences, and we appreciate that you as a commission have the ability to to move forward in in the way that you see fit for the community. We still urge the planning commission to consider setting a maximum story height for the ground floor and the CBD, similar to what Mr. Waller mentioned with the historic character. We just believe that that would help to preserve the massing and scale with any new infill buildings to make sure they fit and are compatible. The other item was just in the the table where we raised a question about density, residential density in CBD and B. And B one. I know that we allow upper floor residential in CBD. We also allow single-family residential in B one and two-unit multifamily. I just didn't see in the table that we have a minimum size in square feet for residential, even though it's only allowed on the upper floors in CBD. I just don't know how small of a unit people could go down to. Like, could they do a three hundred square foot studio? We just weren't sure. So other than that, we very much support this idea of the historic district as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Not on the agenda. Good. Okay. Well, what is on the agenda tonight is a review of the proposal zoning code, the ten twenty-one version. It's been on the website for a few weeks now. And so this is our third public hearing. This will be structured again like we do, and people will have three minutes to comment. We can't get into a back and forth discussion with you during this comment. Your turn to tell us what you think or if you have a comment. Then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll discuss what comes. All right.
To open public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call.
All in favors.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing is open. You can have your three minutes. What would you like to tell us about the proposed zoning?
Hi, guys. Bob Luthner, one forty-eight West Bay, former member of the planning committee. I'm here tonight to express my enthusiastic support for the approval of this draft zoning ordinance. This ordinance is a accumulation of over seventeen hundred hours of careful consideration. Seventeen hundred hours we spent developing this. It reflects five town hall listing sessions, ten community open houses dispersed between the late winter, late winter, early spring, and late summer, early fall, and online community service survey, and untold hours of dialogue with community members. And when I say community members, I'm not just talking residents. We talked with residents, we talked with seasonal people, we talked with people who reside full-time but reside outside of Harbor Springs. We really tried to listen to everybody's concerns. And I think we've done a pretty good job of it. From my perspective, the update represents a vast improvement, a vast improvement relative to the current iteration of the code. I think the most significant improvement, and it's so simple, but perhaps the most significant improvement is the format of the code. It replaces an archaic format with a clean and easy to interpret format. If any of you have looked at the current format, it's almost impossible to decide. It truly is. And I think that we've done a good job, they've done a good job, of fixing that problem and placing lots of graphics in there, lots of tables, getting rid of the text-heavy format and making it easier to understand. In addition, though, it fixes a number of vulnerabilities that I think are implicit in the current code, including it prohibits mobile homes from locating in inappropriate districts. I don't know if some of you know this or not, but mobile homes currently in current code are permitted in certain single-family districts. And this this ordinance, the proposed ordinance, would prevent that. It prohibits shipping containers, shipping containers, from being used as a building material in the development of new houses, houses, or garages, sheds. That would be restricted under the proposed ordinance. It prohibits the development of gas stations in the central business district. I I can't imagine any member of our community, except perhaps someone who likes gas stations, would want a gas station in our our CBD, but this new ordinance would prevent that. And astoundingly to me, when I first started working on this, sexually oriented businesses under the current ordinance are allowed in our central business district under special land use. And this ordinance would prevent that from happening. So it really, really is a dramatic improvement over the current code. The cool thing about this ordinance is, all the same time, this ordinance remains true to the ideals of the current code. And the charm, and it helps to protect the charm of our city. What do I mean by that? Well, it forbids duplexes in single-unit neighborhoods. That means that today, in neighborhoods where duplexes are prohibited, the code endorses that and codifies that on a go-forward basis. No duplexes in single-family residence areas. It retains our residential and agricultural area north of the bluff. It introduces architectural standards for the central business district that are not in place today. It adds shoreline protection and dark sky standards for the community. And I think the most important thing, in my opinion, it will not measurably impact the anticipated growth rate within the current zoning code. What do I mean by that? I mean that if we choose to retain the current code, or we choose to go with the ordinance as proposed, look out ten years, look out twenty years, the number of incremental homes that could be developed under either scenario would be virtually identical. It does not allow for unchecked growth. So for all of these reasons, and many more that are more minutia that I won't bore you all with, I urge the community to embrace and support the approval of this code. We all need to wrap our hands around this and and say this is a good thing for Harbor Springs. And I'd like to offer the planning commission, congratulations to all of you for your patience. It's unbelievable the patience that you guys have demonstrated. And you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Any other comments in the room?
Jeannie Benjamin, five 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 Harrison Street. I'm not a public speaker, everybody knows that. But I appreciate the time that you allowed me on Planning Commission. As I said, it was a great learning experience. And I I'm happy with how it's all come together. I think there are a lot of compromises made, and I hope all goes well tonight. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jeannie. That means a lot.
For Siders, sixteen East Lake. I just want to mirror the, you know, all the points that I've heard already. I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I would love to see this draft get approved. I don't have a grand vision for the town. I'm not thinking about really planned developments or downtown that much. Generally in favor of progress, but for myself as a homeowner, I came in about eighteen months ago to Jeff's office in the middle of all this turmoil, wanting to do a remodel and talk about building an ADU. But ever since, as I've looked at the old zone or the current zone code, I, it is a, it is a mess. You know, it's hard to read and work with. And I, as a property owner, would just like to build an ADU where my parents can come and live with my family. And I am excited about all the progress that's been made. And I do want to say that when we did the survey last year, I feel like that was really taken into account. You guys have, you know, you took out the things that were controversial to some members of the community, like triplexes. I've been to most of these meetings, the regular meetings last year. You guys have really listened, and I feel like you really landed in the middle, in a, in a really nice spot. They heard the concerns, taken that into account, found that middle ground, and I feel like we have something we can work with. And as a community member, I would like to move forward and, you know, see the progress happen, get back to, you know, I just kind of want to remodel my house now. So so thank you for all your hard.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments in the room? Anybody have a hand up on Zoom besides Linay, who may have left it up?
Linay, your hand's still up.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, sorry, I didn't realize that there was a public hearing as well after, so apologies for for not waiting. So anyway, thank you all for for considering the comments I made earlier. And I I just think the last thing is the Administrative Review Committee for projects, five thousand square feet and smaller. I'm just wondering if we could maybe take a look at that square footage. That's, that can be a pretty big building to not go in front of planning commission and have more of a sounding board. So, you know, I've seen it be about a thousand square feet. It's kind of comfortable, a small addition to a building or something, but just want to see if you could consider that. But otherwise, everything's great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call for comments then. All right.
I'm going to close public hearing.
Second, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. And Jim Raymer, our city attorney, is here with us tonight. Jim, we have some suggestions that came in since the last meeting and since the public hearing was announced. We have some suggestions from Linay on paper that John has taken a look at. And how do you think we best proceed at this point with?
Well, my my best advice. My best advice would be to deal with the code as it was noticed up for a public hearing tonight. If if you choose to open the door to new concepts and desire to make changes, you will have to have another public hearing. So my suggestion would be that if the code dated ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-five is satisfactory to you, that you move to endorse it and recommend it to the city council. If there are subsequent changes that you want to consider, let's do those at another meeting.
Okay. And as a reminder, City Council will be only a couple of meetings, one public hearing on this, so they can take into these changes that were brought to afterwards at their public hearing. And they may have additional changes as well.
And and the planning commission could decide at a future meeting, say even next week, if we wanted to weigh in on some additional improvements or adjustments or whatever, and that would be passed on to city council? Or does it even? Do they, do you even need a setting?
Planning Commission wants to make, recommend changes to the zoning code. It must hold a public hearing on those recommendations, on those proposed changes before the recommendations.
Okay.
Just pass them.
But city council could make any adjustments that they might want.
Yes.
Okay. So be it. All right, I guess let's bring this to the point that we've been working towards for quite a while. And Jim, one wanted to make a motion to approve the zoning code. How would they do that?
Oh, I.
I'll let Jim go first.
I prepared a resolution of the planning commission, which I believe you all should have copies of. And we need a motion of one of you to adopt it and support, and then a vote in favor.
John, what are you thinking?
I guess it's more of a procedural question that I have, is that I think in the to be responsive to the changes that were requested by the We Love Group to Linay Wells. I guess the way that I would be looking at this is the planning commission would take take action tonight, one way or the other, on the twenty, on the ten twenty-one code. I would suggest at the November twentieth meeting and to be transparent would be at that time, the planning commission would go through the memo that I prepared relative to their requested changes. And then at that time, maybe make a motion to city council because they're going to be deliberating on the the ten twenty-one code. The planning commission then would send over what they what they would consider as part of their suggestions, if you agree or disagree with them. So city council has something to weigh in if they want to make any changes to the code as part of their their process. But I do think I, in in all fairness, that I want to make sure that the suggestions that were made by Linay as a consultant for the We Love Group are taken taken under consideration as part of the city council's deliberation.
Okay. Well, then, sounds like everybody's in agreement that we don't deal with those tonight.
We'll deal with those at next Thursday's meeting.
You know, make sure Jim's in sync with that, because it sounded like maybe he wasn't. So let's get you guys together and we'll figure out.
Well, I think a way to do that is this is just a suggestion, is that at your next November twentieth planning commission meeting, you can make a recommendation that John Igoangeli, the city planner, present those changes to city council. So don't don't recommend approving or not approving those changes, but have John Igoangeli present those changes to the table that you see here, to city council, to city councils. I think that would solve both.
All right, I'd be happy.
All right. So Jim, do we need to read all the wording in that resolution, or do we reference it?
Well, I think it's before you, if everybody in the planning commission has read it. Welcome to read it if you want, but you don't have, have already.
As we ponder making a motion here, I'm not a superstitious person at all, but I did make the motion to adopt four thirty-nine. So I'll not be making a motion this time. There's high likely, I'd have support the motion, but I won't make it.
All right. Anybody in the mood? Oh.
You make it.
All right. I make a motion that we adapt the resolution in front of us here for the draft zoning code updates that we've developed here.
I'll second.
All right.
I'll reference the date.
Date of the resolution is November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Date of the draft is October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Victor, you want to?
Roll call. I'll go really slow. Barry Luskard.
Yes.
Kenny Stewart.
Yes.
Vanessa Warren.
Yes.
Phil Mulder.
Yes.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Chip Evers.
Yes.
Mark Bade.
Yes.
Motion has. Motion has.
Uh, question.
Yeah.
Uh, who determines the agenda for next week's meeting? Is that you or?
Well, it's already been posted. So it hasn't been posted yet. Jeff's already emailed it out cuz he has to leave town. So.
That's right.
And so Jeff and Bill probably work out together.
Okay, so is there a way that we can get the, well, let's revisit that, the, if the information from John's summary. I heard two things. It would either come to our booth at a future meeting or it will go directly to city council. And I'm open either way, but I'm not quite sure where we stand right then.
So what I had suggested was that it goes to the planning mission on November twentieth and then planning mission will make a recommendation, uh, that John Ico Angeli presents those changes or staff, does those changes to city council when they discuss them.
I see. And I agree with that. And so can that get on the agenda for?
That's moving out of the agenda. So just for clarification, for regular meetings per the Open Meetings Act, there, an agenda doesn't even need to be spelled out for the meeting. So, um, so we don't even worry about that being an issue. What we'll do is we'll just add it on. Um, we'll add something on the revised agenda. Um, but it, it doesn't need necessarily, just because the agenda was already posted or delivered to you guys, doesn't mean it, I can't be corrected or changed.
Okay, that, that's fine. That helps. And I agree with the direction we're heading, now that I understand a little better.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the table?
Yeah, I'd like to, we need to just comment, um, you know, it's been a long process and I wanna thank, uh, all the public for all their, um, what they've done. Um, little bit more kumbaya going on here, I know, but, uh, um, and also I wanna thank, uh, the work that Linay did. And I wanna thank John for being so responsive to her memo. We made a lot of progress in terms of working together, is what I'm thinking. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. And I'd like to just echo this kind of thing for everybody who's participated throughout all of this process. And, uh, no doubt we've got a better product because of that. And, uh, I hope city council just loves this. All right. Thanks, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Whoa.